Meeting to order today is Wednesday, February the 7th. It is nine o'clock. It's a bit of a drizzly day outside, but it's good to have everybody here this morning. I don't see Mr. Okay. Would you stand? We'll have the invitation and then join us in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and then to the Texas flag. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this day, dear God, and for the blessings of this life. Let us be mindful, Father, that all of us serve one another in one capacity or another. Let us use wisdom as we gain knowledge. Let us have good judgment in the decisions that we make. And Father, let us not be selfish in those decisions. Let us be considerate of those and how it affects them. Father, we just thank you for your love. We thank you for our first responders who show that love by the work that they do. We ask that you watch over them, that you protect them and keep them. Be with our military in this land and in foreign lands. Keep them safe, dear God. And we thank you for this awesome country that we live in. Thank you for the great state of Texas. And it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you'd be seated, please. We come to agenda item number two. This is our time for public comments. If there's something that you'd like to share with the court this morning, we'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and you have up to two minutes.
I won't need that much.
All right, sir.
Ronnie Floyd. I am the northern neighbor to the proposed station of the bullet train in Grimes Prairie. And I want to thank the commissioners' court for what they've done to oppose this land grab. And I also want to ask that you and the citizens of incorporated cities within Grimes County consider revitalizing the 391 Commission. I know our former judge didn't think much of it. I don't think Gary thinks much of it. But it's another tool to use in coordinating the direction that Grimes County takes in the future. And I think it's been very effective in other counties. And I strongly suggest that you consider revitalizing.
Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Any other public comments? Okay. If y'all don't speak up, I get to. With caution, Mr. Attorney. I want to recognize our elections administrator's office. I don't know if Ms. Duff is here. I know that Vanessa Brzezinski is at a seminar this week. But I just want to share with the court and the citizens that are here this morning that Grimes County, out of the 234 election websites that are available to people to look at, Grimes County was one of 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16 counties that received an outstanding rating. And they got a score of 100% or higher. And I just want you to know that we're up there with Hayes County, Dallas County, Denton County, Montgomery County, Victoria. So we were competing with some of the big neighbors out there. And I think that's very impressive for our county. And I wish Ms. Duff and Ms. Brzezinski were here so they could hear this. But I'm just tickled to death for the work that they're doing. And anyway, if you see them and you like it, tell them thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will do. I'm sorry. If you'd like to address the court.
Do it in a question.
We won't answer your question.
I'm David Paffey.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask how many top, how many counties?
I'll repeat that since I already gave it. 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16 counties?
16.
16, yes, sir. And 234 counties do have what they would classify as an election website. Okay? Are there any other public comments? And finally, no more public comments? We'll move to consent agenda items number three, number four, and number five. We've been sent this information. Are there any comments or questions regarding any of the consent agenda items? There are no questions or comments. I move to approve the consent agenda items three, four, and five.
I second the motion.
I have a motion to approve consent agenda items number three, four, and five from Commissioner Mallett and a second from Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Wagner, the red light's on. Is that an issue? It should be on. Okay. Consent, I mean, agenda item number seven. We've had a request from, I'm sorry, six. We've had a request from our executive director to table this till next week. Is that acceptable to the court?
It is.
Then we shall do that. Number seven, Mesa Medical Transport Solutions, Keith Loffler. The agenda says, "Consider and take action to approve supplemental emergency medical transportation interns policy available to county employees." We had Ms. Loffler here a quarter or two ago. And there were some excellent questions that were raised in and during that presentation. And a number of those questions have been answered. But Keith, if you'd like to share with the court what you have found out since then, that you can give us more information.
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing me in here again. I got to visit with Mrs. Pope briefly before court. And I just want to make sure that people are clear on how this process works mainly. If you're a member with us and something happens and you have to take an emergency medical transport, air or ground, either one, does not matter. What's going to happen is whatever service transports you, they're going to bill your insurance, right? So your insurance and Mrs. Pope talked Blue Cross Blue Shield on, you know, what they pay and stuff. But not getting too in detail, they're going to end up paying about a fourth, give or take. They're going to pay X amount, right? So once that's done, insurance has paid X amount, then about 30 days out or 60 days, it's different for every provider, they're going to, you're going to get an explanation of benefits, the EOP, the rest of the bill. That's when you call Massa and you go, hey, a member number, whatever your member number is, hand that bill to them, and then we take it from there. That means you're out, no lot of pocket, no deductible. And we've got negotiated rates with different services and so forth. So that's where we come in on your behalf, we're your advocate. So I just want to make sure y'all understand how that works. So, you know, I could go into more details and confuse everybody, but I'm trying to keep it, you know, pretty basic. But anyway, since I was here last time, you know, we had the $9 Emergent product. Well, that, since then, I just got back this past weekend from our corporate conference, that one got taken off the table because we, everywhere we go, as we introduce the Platinum, which is the worldwide service, I don't know if y'all remember that part, but we have two different services, worldwide and domestic. Well, the worldwide, it involves repatriation. So if you're in, pick a place, Italy or wherever, and something happens, we bring you home. Kids home, spouse home, all that stuff. So everywhere we went, everybody's going, well, if I have the Emergent, you know, and I'm in California or somewhere away from home, how do I get back? So everybody wanted to incorporate repatriation in the Emergent to get you back home. Does that make sense? So we came out, we got rid of the Emergent, came out with the Emergent Plus, which does that. We just, I got two of these, which I can leave with you guys. We haven't even got our printing material, but it explains to you the three different programs. We've got Platinum, Emergent Plus, which is domestic, United States, Canada. And then we have Ground Only. You know, me personally, I think the Ground Only is going to be advantageous to big cities, you know, more Houston, Kany area versus rural areas. You know, people want to know, if I've got to get to Houston, I want the option of the helicopter. So that's where the Emergent Plus really comes into play. It's $14 a month, so $7 paycheck. So the nine's off the table. We have Platinum, the Emergent Plus, and the Emergent and Ground. So which, you know, I can leave this with you guys. If y'all want to, Lucy or whoever wants it. But anyway, I just want to explain the difference between the two. But the agreement is exactly the same, just different pricing. Does that make sense? And I spoke with you a little bit ago. I guess everybody's okay with the terms of the agreement, which basically just says you're allowing me in here to offer it to your employees on a voluntary basis. So anyway.
So it's not going to cost the county any money? If employees would like to have this coverage, it'll be an deduction out of their paycheck and then they'll have the coverage.
That is correct. That's correct.
And Keith, it's, I'm just, go ahead.
I was going to ask about spouses.
Yes, that's the good thing about this is we, it covers you, the employee, spouse, or partner. You know, a lot of times you have common law and so forth. And your dependent up to the age of 26. So yes, it covers everybody in the family.
On average, if an accident occurred in Grimes County and it had to be lifelighted to say Houston, what would the average cost be on that?
You know, it's roughly 50, 60, 70 grand. We use 50,000 as an average because it's going to be somewhere in that neighborhood. And keep in mind, we don't pay for just a transport. We pay for everything that's administered during transport. So did you have a heart attack that was shocking you? Or did you break your leg? So that, you know, it's such a big gap. And I'm not trying to be vague on it. It just is what it is. And a perfect example, we did an enrollment with Industrial ISD. And this lady, she said, man, I wish you'd been here a year or two ago. She got lifelighted 94 grand. She held the title for a long time. And then a few months later, we did another enrollment. A gentleman, he and his wife had a car wreck. Wife got lifelighted. She passed away, but he got $100,000 bill from whatever provider. And insurance paid 25,000. So he lost his wife and a $75,000 bill. So I think that much really go, hey, Massa, pay this bill.
I have, I have a question for you. I have a 29-year-old disabled son. Would he be covered under that because he is disabled?
You know, there's absolutely to answer that question. But if I understand it correctly, and I'll get more clarification on that, under, when somebody is disabled, I think they, don't they fall under like Medicare, Medicaid?
Yes, Medicaid.
Yeah, one of the two. And so a big majority of that is covered, but absolutely it will.
If I understand it correctly, I talked to Mr. Pope earlier, and we have Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance. And typically, Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay 80% of ground transport.
Of the allowable.
Oh, and then that's the term they use, allowable expenses. Now, just ground, ground transport, I understand, they possibly would pay 80% of that. You'd be responsible for the balance. On air transport, that's not one of the allowable expenses. So therefore, they may not pay it. And if they do, it may be only 20% of that expense you were talking about.
Exactly.
So it might be a good idea to have this option for the employees if they understand that one of the allowable expenses of our current insurance policy is not air transport.
That's true.
So if they're in an accident and have to be lifelighted to Houston or somewhere, they're liable to end up with a $50,000 picket.
And, and to add to that, that's a great point. Add to that, anybody that's got kids learning to drive, kids in sports, you know, anything, like a kid playing football, anything head injury, it's, they're going lifelighted. I mean, it just is what it is. And just kind of add a little bit of numbers to that. Since 94, we've processed over 40,000 claims and over $70 million. So, you know, we've been around since 74. That's what we do. So it's good that you do your due diligence.
Several people in the county are caretakers for their parents. Since they're the caretaker of their parent, what kind of option would they have?
Okay. So what we do as members of city, county, school, district, that's what we typically call on, we would run your parents through the group discount of the county, Grimes County. So, but they would only be allowed the Platinum. With Platinum, it's $468. But if you were to go online and get the Platinum, it's 725. So it's, you know, almost half. So, you know, that's, that's what we have to offer someone outside of a county employee slash payroll de-.
That's an annual?
Yes, annual, yes.
Now, we haven't signed the contract that you're going to supply for anybody that signs up. But do you have any of these allowable expenses or deductions in your plan? You mentioned something about you have contracts or you have relationships with some transport company. What if there's a transport company that you don't have a relationship with? Is that going to be?
That's where Nicole Parcella comes in, and she's our advocate for you. And she goes to work with whichever provider, you know, just say lifelighted, whichever one it is. And so she's going to, she's going to, you know, obviously try to negotiate the best rate, but keeps you from having to do it. And then we just, we still are going to pay the rest of the bill.
Well, I'm just asking. I mean, you don't have any of those hidden costs in there. Well, we don't cover that.
No. No, no, no. I know what you're saying. No, 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 we don't.
I'd like to speak to the fact that as we've been reviewing emergency personnel services here in the county, did I say that right? EMS services. We're, they, St. Joseph, CHI, CHI St. Joseph started auto launch. And it is automatically, the helicopters will launch for certain types of emergencies. And I think the provider in chief or Mr. Blake might, is it PSI?
PHI.
PHI. Do you have a relationship with them?
Yes, actually, we just sealed the deal with Air Methods. I don't know if anybody's familiar with Air Methods, but they're the largest air provider in the United States. We just, we're this close to PHI, obviously working on lifelight. So, you know, that's the beauty of this deal is I know PHI, Air Evac, some of those guys have their own benefit program, so to speak. But the difference between them and us is they're only air or ground. But with them, they're networked. So if you have a membership with them, something happens, you better, it's them that fix you up. Because if you have a membership PHI and lifelight picks you up, you know, the other thing with them is you better be in about a 50-mile radius of where they're hubbed so they can get you put in. You know, if you're on vacation in California, then your membership's not going to do any good. Where with us, I don't care who takes you.
Well, I had an experience a couple of weeks ago. And at the end of the call, it said, we dispatch auto lunch. And I'm like, no, don't do it. So I just want to make the citizens aware, or this court aware that that may happen. It may not be our call to make that. It's up to CHI, Emergency Dispatch, to send.
Exactly. And a perfect example, we signed up the city of El Campo. Well, the chief of police, motorcycle guy, rides motorcycle, hill, you know, hill country and stuff. And, and he had a membership with PHI. And he said, hey, I'm sitting there thinking, if I'm riding in the hill country and I go flying off the mountain, he said, how they going to get PHI to take me? He said, I start putting a sticker on top of his helmet, say PHI. And I was like, but, good point. But anyway, that's, actually, that's the down part.
I have one other question. Is there any, is there any quantity limitation? I mean, if we only have one employee sign up, you're going to accept them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We, you know, if that's an issue, that's typically within the county or the city. That's kind of y'all's own rule. We don't have that rule, but you got to.
Do we have that rule?
No. We haven't had this insurance, so there's no.
Understood.
No rule that's been created for this insurance.
Thank you.
It's usually the carrier that has that, or the provider that makes that requirement. They can provide a lower premium if everybody, if we're committed to everybody is required. Could I ask a question? You mentioned the numbers or the stats on how many claims and what's been processed. Didn't hear you say that's what's been paid. Is that's what's been paid?
Absolutely. That's what's been, we've paid out over $70 million.
What, what percentage of claims have you denied?
That'll be a Nicole question. But here's what we don't pay is when somebody, I don't know. I'll give you a perfect example. I just got back from my corporate meeting last weekend. This lady was having an anxiety attack, and she'd been smoking pot and all kinds of crazy stuff, and called an ambulance and got taken to the hospital. And, you know, we don't cover like that or like, we've actually had this one happen. I got a dialysis appointment, but I don't have a car vehicle. Ooh, I got Massa, so they call an ambulance to drive them to dialysis. You know, it's got to be a medical emergency. And we leave that judgment up to the paramedics. They're licensed, they're trained. You know, this person needs a ground ambulance. It's bad enough bringing the lifelight. So that, we leave that call up to them. So I, you know, there's no claims unpaid on a emergency medical transport. But you always get the ones that are kind of in the gray area, you know, like the lady that had the anxiety attack. I mean, you know, it's going to be a medical emergency. If that answers your question.
It doesn't answer, it answers my question that you don't know the answer to, how many have been denied.
I'm not going to attempt, thank you.
I understand, I understand. I just, if you had it, I wanted the, wanted the court to have that information. The issues that I raised before, and it's not a knock on these folks, but any, at any time, there could be an entity that could show up on your doorstep and say, I'd like to have your permission to offer something to the employees of the county. Certainly, the county employees could get this on their own. They don't need you to get it. But what you're doing is potentially getting them a reduced rate, but you're also authorizing a deduction out of their check. I just want to be sure that you recognize the significance of that. In Texas, there are very few people that can get in an employee's check. If I have a judgment against you, Joe Vow, I can't get a deduction from your check to pay that judgment. So to the degree that you're acting as a steward for the employees, I just want you to be cognizant of the fact that you're allowing someone to potentially get into the paychecks of the employees. You better find it worth doing before you start doing that. Because the employees can do it on their own. And potentially, they haven't done it on their own. I don't know if there's a single employee that's done this on their own. Now, they may, if the court says, we're not going to permit this as a countywide endeavor, they may do that now, being aware of it. I just want you to go into this thing eyes wide open and know that tomorrow, somebody could show up with another great insurance plan or some great insurance for a circumstance that may be a once-in-a-lifetime or twice-in-a-lifetime potential event. You have to decide whether this is something that you want your employees to have the opportunity for, but also the risk of, that is paying something that they may not be able to make a claim on. So they have, employees are adults, let's hope, and they have.
They're old enough to be adults.
They have the ability and to review these documents on their own. They all should have some personal accountability. But you're being asked to be the gatekeeper here. Do we let these folks in the gate? That's your call, and I want you to have your eyes wide open. That's all.
Thank you.
Would this be any different than the dental plan that we offered, which is deducted from the check?
I don't believe it would be any different as far as the process. It would be the employee consenting to the deduction and you as the employer saying, I'm okay with this. We've allowed this to happen. As I think we heard, there may be a reduced rate in it for the employees of the county approving, allowing them to do this on a countywide basis. Maybe I'm mistaken. But it sounds like the same arrangement. I would say it's not the same when you're dealing with dental versus this transportation insurance. Those are obviously two different things.
Understood. But I'm just saying the process. And we're offering this to them, just like the dental.
Right.
And they have the option, either to accept it or decline.
Right. I don't disagree with you.
So there wouldn't be any repercussions on us if we offered it and they accepted it and they signed something that says we can deduct this premium from their payroll check?
If you approve it, I suspect that employees will think that you vouched for it. And so it will have a sponsorship in their minds? That this is viable, legitimate, important, et cetera? That maybe if they were left to their own devices to get it on their own, you will not have made that comment. That's the only thing I'm saying to you is, by you approving this arrangement, maybe there's a reduced premium, but it also takes on the appearance of a sponsorship by this court to your employees to say, we believe this is something that is viable, that this is, I'm not going to say important, but this is something that is appropriate. And I'm just saying to you, as being, being the gatekeeper, be sure that this is something that you want to let in the gate.
I'd like to ask what type of, if a person was getting this on their own, what, as a group, what are.
The only thing a person could get on their own is $720 for the Platinum. That's the only one that's offered individually. And talk about the discounted rate, you know, $14, that is the discounted rate for payroll deduction, you know, employees.
But the only one that if they went to your website, the only one you offer is the Platinum?
That is correct. You know, but keep in mind, the Platinum, it's the, it's the most popular selling one because, you know, it covers you guests out, you know, internationally, everywhere, but domestically as well. So, I mean, and then it goes in, you know, if you have the Platinum, you're organ donor, organ recipient, all the repatriation all over the world. You know, it, I mean, it's all listed on here. I'll give you one of these, and you see all the bullet points. And, you know, I mean, I don't have near enough time to go over everything, so.
But the Platinum on the employee discount is about 34, if I make no mistake.
It's 468.
468.
So 720 if you went online, 468 for an employee, if they want to pay out.
Does the employee, once they've signed up for one plan, have the option to change into another plan?
Absolutely.
Do they have the option, once they change to another plan, to change back to the other plan?
Go from Platinum to Ground.
Example, so I get the domestic one, but I'm going to have a 50th wedding anniversary cruise next year. So prior to that, then I up it. When I get back safe and sound, then I deduct it.
No, once you, and I just had two people do that at Jermaine. Actually, that's where I'm going next. But two people wanted to upgrade because one guy's wife's going on a missionary to Kenya. She's going to Kenya, another guy, he and his wife are going to Cancun. So they want to upgrade to the Platinum. Usually, we recommend to upgrade 30, 60 days prior to your, your trip. Because about 10 days prior to your trip, you call Massa, the 100 number on your card. Thank you. And say, hey, I'm going to the number, what did you do for in two weeks? I'm going to Cancun or wherever you're going. And so that way, we've got you on our radar. You know, we, we know that you're going to be in Cancun, so, you know, we're ready.
Right. But my question is, once I come back from Cancun, do I have the right to bring it back down?
Once you upgrade to the Platinum, you keep it for a year. Because it just keeps everybody going, I'll throw the trip back to the, you know, $14 bill.
That's fine. You answered my question.
Right.
What about county retirees?
Once you retire, actually, and I just had a guy sign up yesterday, same deal, just retired from City of El Campo. He, once you retire, we keep you under the group rate of the county or city or wherever you work. And we move you to a Platinum, the 468. So that's how, so the retirees.
Then the premium is paid directly from the retiree to you?
Correct.
Or is it still taken out of their retirement check?
Exactly. We, we give you a self-pay application versus the payroll deduct application. It's two, two different. We should upgrade your questions.
And Judge, I've seen the agreement that the employee will sign and just encourage employees to read their agreement, obviously. But there's a provision in there that requires arbitration if there's a dispute. I would want to be sure that employees were aware of that. Arbitration usually requires that you hire somebody with expertise to handle an arbitration should you want to dispute it. When there are arbitration provisions in a contract that a client asks me to review, it's, I do everything I can to remove that to say, if there's a dispute, we're going to litigate it. Because I don't want to go to arbitration, which is run by a different set of rules. I just would want the employees to know that. And maybe I'm just telling Ms. Pope that.
And is there, is there a county contract or agreement?
Not that I've seen.
Is proposed to us to sign?
Yes, we have the agreement with you guys saying, you allow me to offer it to your employees. And then everybody that enrolls, then they'll get their MSA, you know. and then everybody that enrolls, then they'll get their MSA, you know, membership service agreement and it claims, you know how it works and so forth.
And the MSA is what I've seen?
I know you did read it.
Yeah, okay. It wasn't in the pre-reading, that's what I'm hearing, okay.
I'm looking for what you said, and I don't-
All right, so-
The MSA is what I've seen, I don't think I've seen-
You haven't seen this?
I don't believe so.
That was just the original agreement that we got initially.
Okay.
Did you see that?
I don't, I've slept since then.
I think that's what you were reading off the last time I was here.
Do you have a question, Judge? Yes, fine.
I'm sorry. Insurance?
Platinum is thirty-nine dollars a month, so nineteen, typically, you have two paper, nineteen fifty paycheck. The emergent plus is fourteen dollars a month, seven dollars a paper. And then the, just the ground only, I can leave this with you. But just the ground only is, I'll listen to that question, right? It's nine bucks a month, so four dollars fifty cents paycheck. The platinum, emergent plus, ground.
Four sixty-eight for platinum, one sixty for emergent, and ninety-nine for ground.
Right. I mean, if you, if you pay all upfront, but, you know, that's the monthly deal, I mean, the annual deal. But monthly, it's thirty-nine, fourteen, and nine.
I thought you said they took the nine off.
Nine's just for the ground, ground only. I know, it's gonna be a little confusing to some people.
Judge, I found the agreement that I happened to highlight for myself, apparently, so when I've forgotten what I looked at, I remember. The one thing that I would suggest is it has a term of one year with an automatic renewal, unless we send notice. The court has, as of late, tried to engage in a practice of reversing that, that it only renews if you request a renewal versus automatic renewal. You may wanna attempt to negotiate that. I'll leave that to you, it's been your policy, though.
To answer your question, the renewal, if you sign up payroll deduct, it just keeps on, you know, whichever plan you get, X amount per paper, it just keeps on going until you say, "Hey, you know, I really don't want any more thirty days notice." After thirty, cause we pay upfront, so you pay in February, act of date March one, one month ahead. So, you know, you say, and this, a lot of my customers, hey, so-and-so got terminated or whatever the situation is, so they're paid up through February, so March one, we need to stop whatever, you know, person is, got terminated, whatever. But if you choose to not take it anymore, you just thirty days notice, "Hey, I don't wanna do it anymore."
Well, and I understand that for the employee, but you're asking the employer to sign, and I thought you were telling me that the employer benefit agreement that has a place for the employer to sign, this was the agreement that would bind the court, that has the term of one year with automatic renewal, not the employee, while the employee decides to continue it. I'm saying that as far as the court's concerned, it appears it has a one-year term, and without thirty days notice to you that the employer wants out, then it automatically renews. Is that accurate?
Right, if, if they want, I mean, it's auto-renewed, but if they can cancel the contract at any time of the week, so it doesn't-
No, don't believe that, that's not what it says.
That's why I was hoping you were gonna talk to Nicole, cause I was trying to get to y'all again.
Well, that's fine, but the language is gonna have to change. The language doesn't say that. It says one year, unless you, and it automatically renews unless we give at least thirty days notice. If, if you want to change that, I'd be happy to talk to Nicole or whomever, but I'm not, I don't know that you're requesting that. And so, I know that's been the general policy, so if you're requesting that change, I will be happy to talk to her about that, that change. Or the change of, you can terminate at any point. She, I like that, obviously.
Sounds even better.
Yeah, but that's not how it reads at this point. And I could've talked to her, but I wouldn't have known what they wanted to do without talking to them.
Got it, okay.
Any other questions for Keith?
So Keith, this is the employer, this is not what the employee signed?
That's correct. Yeah, the employee just gets an application and it's, you know, just a standard application, it's just very simple. And then, once they, about, I don't know, two, three weeks later, they'll get their, their welcome pack has their MSA in it, and membership cards.
Could I ask a question, and I'm sorry to interrupt your party? The-
Kill it.
I almost used a line from Forrest Gump, but I won't do that. So, the same paragraph under term for the employer agreement reads, "Upon the termination of the agreement for any reason, shall be the employer's obligation to notify its employees of such termination and its impact on their membership coverage." What is that? What's the impact? Does their rate go up?
Well, it will have to, because they're no longer a payroll deducted employee. So, if they want, which people do this, they have two options. If a member gets terminated or leaves, or whatever the situation, gets to their next place of employment, a lot of times they'll come to me and say, "Hey, can you talk to my boss and see if you can bring Massa into this organization, wherever, wherever they end up?" So, A, we'll try that, but if it doesn't work, then B, we can go back and, and sign him up on a platinum. Kinda like, just like a retiree and stuff. But the good thing is, they'll already be, have been a member, so they've got member one, two, three, four, five, whatever their number is, and so we can bring them in on the discounted rate, the four sixty-eight versus seven twenty.
Right, but I, and I don't read, does it, are you saying that the membership rate goes up immediately the day the county is out, or do, have the employees bought in for a year? That it doesn't go up for the remainder of their year?
If they pay a year ahead of time, a year in advance, it stays that way till their anniversary date.
But if they're paying monthly, it'll go up the next month when the county gets out?
Right.
Okay, I don't see that for being-
It, it won't go up. At that point, there will no, there'll be a payroll deduction, so they'll have to come to me and see if we can do a platinum.
Understand.
Or get them where their next place of employment is.
So, once you allow them in the gate, they're staying in the gate? And that's what you're doing, right?
I, you know, and kinda answer more questions. I've been doing this right up to a little, more than two years, and just my cities, counties, school districts, and people I've signed up, I bet you, just my accounts, I've had forty-ish, give or take, people that have already made claims on just an employee with whatever group, you know, city, county, school district. And, you know, so forty over two years, and, you know, I know a lot of people wanna say, "Hey, what's the odds of that happening?" Well, I put it to them this way, hey, you know, just for easy number, a hundred dollars a year, comes ten years, you spend a thousand dollars to cover you and your entire family. Well, you know, a typical ground ambulance, between five hundred to five thousand, so you're ahead of the game on a ground ambulance, but let's throw helicopter ride, fifty, sixty, seventy, ninety grand, whatever it is, it's, it's a CYA claim is what I call it. So, I, you know, when I kinda put it in math there and plug it, everybody goes, "All right, I spent a hundred dollars, okay." I mean, I spent a hundred dollars on it.
And Judge, I'm not saying it's of not of value, and I wanna be sure I'm clear on that, but when the employee sits down, and this is probably how it will work, when they sit down with Lucy and the folks on a yearly basis to decide what they wanna sign up for, maybe at the same time as open enrollment, it's the flurry of documents, the flurry of activity. Who knows what the employee will understand this to be and whether it's really what they wanna do, or whether they've thought through, or whether they've read the brochure? You are the folks who are allowing these folks in the door, in the gate, to be at that table, or to have a flyer at that table, or have a document at that table, or have the ability to get into the employee's paycheck. Just wanna be sure you take that seriously, and I know that you do, but I want it to be eyes wide open.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, you guys.
Okay, so the agenda-
I did have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
This is the agreement that we have the county. This is it.
That's, I believe so, but I can't see so well.
Employee benefit agreement, that's what you're looking at?
That's, the thing that says employer benefit agreement, as I understand it, has a, mine has a signature spot for-
Thank you.
Grimes County and has, in quotation marks, employer. Yes, that's what I'm looking at, or-
Okay, so there is no other document that you're reading from?
Well, I'll, I'll, here, Mr. Shuttle?
Bailiff?
Bailiff.
Yeah, cause we hadn't seen it.
Careful where you start.
That's what I was given, that the employee will sign. So when you say, "Am I looking at another document?", I believe that's what the employee will be asked to sign.
And, and did you have any other, we've talked about everything that you had, issues within this document?
I highlighted in there my concern about the definitions, as with any insurance, whether the salesperson tells you that there are things that don't qualify or not, there are things that don't qualify. I put a highlight around that for me, I would wanna do that for the employee. This is what's covered, I don't expect other things to be covered. But what gave me some concern was that arbitration provision, as well as any dispute, if it reached litigation, which it won't, because when you do arbitration, you take litigation out of the picture.
Yep.
It says litigation will occur in Tarrant County. So those two things, arbitration and Tarrant County, were the things that I noted to myself that the employee certainly needs to be aware of. If you, as a court, said to me that I need to talk to this person that he's asked me to talk to, and I just had, was out of the office the last couple of days, court on Friday and a trial yesterday, haven't had a chance to talk to that person, they may be willing to negotiate this agreement, they may say it's not negotiable. I just don't know without asking. But those are the primary concerns that I have with that document.
So are you saying you're still willing to talk to Nicole?
You bet, I'll do whatever you guys ask me to do. With regard to this contract.
With, with the arbitration portion?
I would be more than happy to, more than happy.
I'm good, you want to say?
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, I think it's time to make a decision where we go. Is this consider and take action to approve supplemental emergency medical transportation insurance policy available to county employees? We've heard from the provider, we've heard from our attorney.
What do we do in terms of, if we're waiting on you to see if you could work that out?
You could approve both the employer agreement on the condition that we take the automatic renewal out, if you want to, and make whatever change you're proposing, either thirty-day termination at any point, or it's one-year term and it has to be renewed by agreement versus automatic renewal. So that one issue could be a condition of your agreement today. And another condition could be that we remove the arbitration provision. I'm okay, if they wanna demand Tarrant County, to me, it's still better to have litigation for our employees than arbitration. If you wanna have me try to negotiate both of those, that's fine. But you could say, "I approve of the agreement on the condition that the arbitration provision is removed."
Okay.
However you wanna do that, you can always approve an agreement on conditions. And in this case, I'm saying, or I think I'm hearing you say, "You may wanna have a condition on the employer agreement, you may wanna have a condition on the employee agreement."
With all that being said, with, that was a mouthful. I make the motion with the considerations that our county attorney look into the auto-renewal and the arbitration of the membership agreement.
I've got one question before we second pass. By removing the automatic renewal, somebody here has to be at the helm and make sure that that gets renewed, cause if it doesn't, then there could be repercussions. I mean, somebody could, we could lose that coverage for a period of time, unless somebody picked up on that. But who are we gonna be in charge of making sure that that is renewed on a timely basis?
Can that be part of the annual re-enrollment, Lucy?
I think it needs to be. Yeah, it could be.
That's, that's what I was thinking, it could go with the annual renew, renewment, when we renew our insurance every year. Just put it in that.
But you're saying, from the Commissioners' Court, it needs to be on a, on a, maybe two months prior to the thirty-day deadline that we need to file to cancel or to renew?
And would it have to come back to court again for approval to renew again?
Cause terms could change.
Yes, it would, and I like your thinking, and I call it, somebody has to be awake at the wheel, and you're exactly right. And because the court sometimes lacks continuity, because people pass away, people resign, people lose their race, I've been an advocate for a long time to, of considering a county manager, but at this point, the county manager is sitting in the middle of you, and it's the county judge. And so, you have an office that is subordinate to you as a court, and that's HR. And so, HR, one would hope, has some continuity, and you would make that an obligation to be effectuated by HR, but as far as somebody remembering to put it on the agenda, it's the collective body and the, both the county manager and the secretary that you have sits between you.
Well, don't we have a running calendar now that, that gives you an idea and the judge an idea of when we should look at current rules and things like that?
But you're exactly, if somebody misses this, man, we spent way too much time on it. But it's the same thing as bonds on developments. When a person, when a developer posts a bond, and that bond is going to expire, we've got that issue to talk about today, but when that bond's gonna expire, and this happened in the past, if bonds expired and nobody was awake at the wheel, but the roads never got constructed, we have no security to make sure those things get done. It's the same problem, it's the same issue. Somebody's gotta be awake at the wheel, and hopefully you can put that in the hands of an office where there is some continuity, and that's really the issue.
So we're gonna be dependent upon our HR department and then the gatekeeper over here?
Actually, I would feel more comfortable if we had the automatic renewal, and if we wanted to decline that policy next year, then we put it on the calendar, hey, let's, thirty days before it expires, or renews, rather, we cancel it. Then there's no lapse. Somebody could be, like you said, asleep at the wheel, and I'd feel more comfortable in this case if we had the automatic renewal and put it on the calendar thirty days prior to renewal. We make the option to cancel it if we want to.
And that's certainly reasonable. It's just been your policy has it late not to have the automatic renewals, and that's why I brought it up.
Cause I mean, that, it could be, it could fall through the cracks. And if it did, it would be held apart.
Or have an automatic renewal with the clause in there, we can cancel it any, you know, thirty days.
I believe it does state, we can cancel thirty days prior to-
Well, not before the renewal, but actually be able to cancel it within thirty days.
That's what he said, he seemed to suggest, was you could cancel on thirty days notice at any point, but that's not how it reads now.
Make sure it's written that way.
Right, absolutely.
Commissioner Walker, I'm gonna put the burden back on you to restate your motion, please. Good luck, man.
May I amend the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. I move, I move to amend the motion by stating what Commissioner Husfield said, and we keep the automatic renewal, but we do look at, keep it on the calendar to look at every year. Will that suffice?
And did you, did you wanna take Commissioner's mallet, Commissioner Mallet's suggestion that we negotiate with them with an attempt to include a thirty-day termination provision?
And a negotiation of a thirty-day.
All right. And then on the employee agreement, did, are you amending her motion about removing the arbitration provision? Are you leaving that alone?
No, we will do that also.
All right, so Commissioner Dobianski has made an amendment to Commissioner Walker's motion. We need to satisfy the amendment first. Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
Commissioner Husfeld seconds the amendment to the motion in regards to the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Did we get a second on the original motion, or is it?
We don't have a second on the-
No, we didn't get a second.
Don't we need to get the amendment resolved first?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
So, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Back to the motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Hus, Commissioner Mallett seconds the motion. We'll now take a vote on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. That was easy. But thank you for everybody's input and questions, I think it's a good move. All right, agenda item number eight, Roden Bridge. Engineer Harry Walker, consider and take possible action to authorize Roden Bridge to go out for bids for construction of head walls on CR one four- to go out for bids for construction of headwalls on CR 141 and CR 404 bridges. Good morning, Mr. Walker.
Good morning. We have an opportunity in conjunction with the bridge construction going on in County Road 408 that TechStop is doing right now. The contractor on that project was required to put in a temporary bypass, which he did using twelve by eight box culverts. Now, they approached me shortly after the project started and said, would you be interested in these box culverts when we're done with them? Because they're used now. TechStop won't let us put in another project. And I negotiated an agreement with them. They will provide those box culverts to us for the cost of loading, transport, and unloading. So we want to take advantage of this. Basically, he's giving us the boxes for the transportation costs. We want to take advantage of this to replace the existing bridge on County Road 141 up in B-Dice, which is on our list as an EMP project, and the County Road Bridge Four, County Road 404 Bridge, which is also an EMP project under the TechStop Bridge Program. However, the, the costs of the transport and whatnot do not include constructing headwalls, wingwalls on those structures. With box culverts, we need to put the headwalls, wingwalls on there. So I'm asking for permission to go out to bids for back construction. So we're going to get the, get the culverts through this TechStop contractor, and we're going to have a bid process where we'll have another contractor come in, or possibly the same one, and build the, the concrete headwalls, wingwalls. We're just asking permission to go out to bids. Once they receive, they'll come back to you for consideration for approval.
And how soon were we looking at the construction?
The contractor that's working on 408 is telling me by about the end of this month, he will be done and ready to remove those boxes. We're going to take the boxes regardless. If, if y'all don't want to go out for bids on, on the concrete structures to go along with it, we'll figure another way to do that if we, even if we had to do it with our own forces. We won't, the bid won't be in time, time to go through advertising and award and everything, have it all as like a package. So we'll place them temporarily, reopen the roads, and then come back and construct the headwalls, wingwalls.
If I remember, there's on 408, there are two box culverts, right?
Yes, they put in double barrel, twelve by ten boxes. Total length is about seventy feet. And that's a sufficient quantity. The 141 structure that we want to replace, we will put in double barrel culverts there because of the capacity needed. But there's enough length left. We can have a twenty-four foot bridge there or culvert structure there and still build a single barrel covert on 404 with a twenty-one foot width. So in both cases, it'll be a larger structure than what currently exists, and definitely an improvement over the old wooden bridges that are there.
Do you know the value of these box culverts and the value of the removal and transportation?
The, the removal, transportation, and placement of these in the channel, we'll prepare the channel ahead of time. Placement will be slightly under the twenty-five thousand dollar bid requirement. I have not looked up the cost of them, but just from past experience, I want to say these boxes probably would run over two hundred dollars a foot. Quite expensive. Each section is forty-five thousand pounds of concrete. So it's, it's definitely, it was an expensive structure for temporary bypass. And would be, we have on the 141 bridge structure, our EMP obligation to TechStop on that is about fifty-three thousand dollars. I think using this process, we will be able to complete that structure for less than that amount.
What you're telling me, we've got about fourteen thousand dollars worth of culverts, and they've given those to us. And then we're going to spend about twenty-five thousand to transport and set.
And I could check on the, on the cost of those, to give a record and see what, what they would charge. But you can pay for the culverts. You also can pay transportation replacement costs.
And if we're going to get them anyway, we're going to have to pay for the trash court.
Right, right.
Or we just tell them we don't want them?
Yeah, if we tell them we don't want them, they will either take them out, or they've actually talked about breaking them up and using them for rip-rep.
Are these bridge replacement projects we're going to have to do anyway, or we've agreed to?
These are EMP projects associated with TechStop Bridge Program. 404 was one that was associated with the old Millican Road Bridge. One, 141, we have submitted as an EMP project. We're still waiting on the final paperwork on that, but they are structures that we have planned to replace. And we have, in the one case now, we have an obligation to TechStop. We're going to replace them anyway.
So if, if we didn't take the gift of the box covert, we're looking at about fourteen thousand with that?
You would still need, you would still need the headwalls and wingwalls to deal with it. If, if we didn't, if we didn't take advantage of the contractors' offer on these particular boxes, we would probably not do these bridges with boxes just because the, we don't have the ability ourselves to handle them with our equipment that will handle those kind of loads. So we would probably do a light car structure for large, you know, metal culverts as an alternative.
So where, where is the savings versus the way, the gift of boxes versus what we would typically do? Is there?
Well, again, if, if you put, if you do the same type of structure, if we put headwalls and wingwalls on the structure, that cost is going to be essentially the same. So the, the savings is in the purchase cost of whatever barrel you put in, you know, for those.
And the lifespan of the concrete covert is going to be way more than a box car.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, the concrete will be forty or fifty year lifespan. If you put in any kind of metal covert, it won't be, you know, half that long probably. Essentially, if we do it all in concrete, none of us will ever have to worry about it again.
Sounds smart. Any other questions?
Then I'll make a motion that we authorize road and bridge go out for bids for construction of headwalls on County Road 141 and 404.
I second.
We have a motion presented by Commissioner Husfeld. We have a motion that is seconded by Commissioner Walker. Item number eight on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, Mr. Walker. Number nine, emergency management subdivision coordinator, Mr. Lilly, you are here. Review and take action to release the road maintenance bond in the amount of forty thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-five cents for King Oaks, section two, phase two. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge Commissioners, we pushed to get this on the agenda because the bond in question was about to expire. And we have, I went out with Harry and inspected the roads to see if they were ready to be accepted into the county network. And we did find some minor issues with at least one of those roads. And so we addressed that with the developer, and they are going to, they've agreed to go ahead and make those repairs, crack seal and so on. But the bond itself, they are actually renewing the bond, so this is not an issue at this point. That bond will be in place until there is, at this point, fifty percent build out, which we found also. I think Corey actually found in the, in the previous, the bond we have now, that it actually states that they are required to provide fifty percent build out before the bond can be lifted. So we thought that there was a possibility with this particular section of King Oaks that it was grandfathered because it was actually under construction about the time when we adopted those rules. But the bonded out itself actually says that fifty percent build out is also required. So they are in the process of renewing the bond as we speak.
So then we're not going to be releasing it, and we'll look at it at a further time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I would presume, Mr. Foulce, no action needed on our part?
No action needs to be taken, and I would, I know, Judge, that you've been here enough even prior to your appointment to know that the best that you can do to avoid the complaints about the disrepair and bad condition of roads is an ounce of prevention, and the bond is the ounce of prevention. So when it comes to bonds, we have to make sure the bonds are in place, they stay in place, they're the right amount of money, and that we're awake at the wheel.
Thank you, sir.
Or at least one of us is awake at the wheel.
All right. We're going to move, thank you.
Just, just one additional point in regard to that.
Is this to item number nine?
Relating to the bond issue. One of the, the issues that came up as we were going through this, South Star, who's the developer of King Oaks, whose name the bond has written in, no longer owns any property in King Oaks. They sold their remaining lots, and they transferred their roads to the Property Owners Association. So one of the issues that came up was South Star would like to get out of that obligation. And working with South Star and the Property Owners Association, they are going to transfer by way of a rider on the bond, the, the rule of principle on that bond to the Property Owners Association. A little bit of an involved discussion. It wasn't a matter of just, oh, you need to crack seal these roads and that. We were able to work that out. I worked with John and Corey, and they're in agreement that this was a valid approach. So in the future, the King Oaks Property Owners Association will be on the hook for the road repairs by way of the bond rather than South Star. And if I could just make the point, and Commissioner Husfeld may, may very well have some input on this. The idea is bond is insurance that the obligation gets performed, and if it doesn't, then you call due bond. And in this case, when we thought we were up against the date, it seemed to me that if the folks weren't going to, weren't going to renew the bond, that we were going to need to call due the bond if there was some, some issues. It appears we don't have that issue. But I, I have not called Lexon Insurance Company to confirm that they will stand behind this rider. Certainly, one of us needs to make that call and confirm that and do a little bit of homework and be sure it's a valid and reputable company. But my concern would be, most property owner associations that I know, they have about five dollars in the bank. And they raise money every year via assessments, but they spend it on improvements. And God forbid they should get caught in litigation and have to spend it on lawyers. But they're not usually flush with money. And the idea that an insurance company would provide a forty thousand dollar bond and that the principal would be the Property Owners Association seems kind of odd to me because I don't think a property owner association likely has much money. And if they defaulted on this, where would the insurance company get the forty thousand out of their, their hide? I mean, what would they have to give? Community areas? The, the local gazebo? I mean, what, what, what gets lost? So just make that point that we all need to be awake here about the forces that are going on, or that are, that are pulling here. And be sure that if we do, if you approve the rider, that we're convinced that this is a reputable company that will stand behind the bond. Would you want to offer anything on that? It just seems odd to me. I've never seen a bond written with the principal being the POA or the HOA.
Has anybody talked to the insurance company, make sure that they go along with this?
I have not. I've just got the rider today, and as of Friday.
And when does the bond expire?
This week. They have advised us as of this morning that they are going to renew the bond. It'll be a few days before we see a time all the signatures are in place. So we're going to have a bond with, it's with reputable, it, it's the same bond we had. There's no rider transferring the ownership, so to speak, of that bond from King Oaks or South Star to King Oaks Property Owner Association. So we can follow through and, and check with the insurance company, check the ratings and whatnot, but it's the same bond we had with the actual. Right. That's my understanding. I just want to be sure that we're awake here in that in future circumstances, if this is the arrangement, just be sure we're, we all understand that anybody can walk in with a piece of paper that says it's a bond and that's, you know, anybody's written it. And if we don't do a little homework to find out that there are real dollars behind that, when the roads don't get improved to our standards, we may have a piece of paper that's not going to do a whole lot of work to fix those roads. That's all.
And just to further add them to what we're talking about again, is a, a section of King Oaks that was built back in 2014. And the fifty percent build out requirement, there's two cul-de-sacs, one cul-de-sac Cambridge. Cambridge is already at fifty, about almost fifty percent. The other one, Oxford, it's only got two homes on it. But we anticipate that at the current rate of building, probably about a year, they will get these up to where they have the fifty percent build out. So it remains to be seen if these roads hold up. But Oxford is holding up really well now, and it's already had two homes built on it. Cambridge has had some issues, but again, they're minor from what we can see, as long as they address those issues by crack seal. So, but we're, we're also, I'm concerned about the bigger picture. King Oaks, section three and section four are much larger. And we need to keep an eye on whether or not those bonds will be carried by, honored by South Star. Those also going to be taken on by the homeowners association. This one's only forty thousand. Those two are much larger. I don't have the exact numbers. So we will take a closer look at this too.
That's the same bond company?
I believe so, yes, Lexon, yes. Because South Star was the one that procured those bonds.
If they agree to do this particular part of the subdivision, they should agree to do the rest of them that haven't expired yet, I guess.
Right. But again, like John raised the question, would, would the insurance company actually, you know, would, would these bonds be legitimate if the POA could not actually produce the assets to back up the bonds if they had to be called? So we will, I will, I will look into this further and report back to you.
No action. Move on.
No motions? Hold up.
No, there's no motion.
I'm sorry? No, I said there's no, right. Okay. Number ten, IT Director Greg Cannon. I've asked Mr. Cannon to visit with the court this morning. He was, or the decision was made by Commissioner's Court and the previous judge to hire an IT director. I've been in a close working relationship with Mr. Cannon since I've been employed by the county. And I'm very pleased with a lot of the things that he has done and uncovered and figured out. And I wanted him to share with you some of the achievements and improvements and observations that he's made. Mr. Cannon, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Judge Foulce. And thank you, Commissioners, for letting me appear before you today. I'll try to keep it brief. I just want to bring you up to date on what I have found in the networks and the computer systems and the software applications now that I've been about a little over a month in this position. Things that we'll cover is the current infrastructure, the top five things that I feel are problems in our infrastructure, the top five risk assessments that we need to look at from a risk standpoint, some of the recommended actions I'm recommending to the court and that need to be addressed in the next, in the short term and in the long term. Some of the benefits we're going to receive by addressing those act, addressing the, the problems. Some of the associated costs that we'll have to incur. And the goal is to try to maintain those costs within the current budget without having to amend the two thousand eighteen budget. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments we've been able to achieve in the last thirty days. And I'll have a conclusion. Any questions? And I'll have a conclusion. Any questions that anybody has? On the infrastructure assessment, I just put down the top five. There was about twenty that I discussed with the judge, with the judge, and we narrowed down to the top five that we thought were most critical to the county at this point. One of the top things I noticed is that we have dissimilar networks. Every office has its own network. There's no connectivity between offices. Each office is set up different. That becomes a management nightmare to try to maintain. It doesn't allow us to communicate between offices if there's a need. I've heard examples where departments have to print things out, carry them across the street to another department, and that department's gotta key those in. If we can join these networks and keep the functions separate and secure, we can still allow that communication without bridging any problems between the departments. We have very outdated and dissimilar equipment. We have all different brands of equipment on switches, on computers, on software. It's all over the board. We have D-Link, TP, Cisco, HP. And that causes problems from a management standpoint because lots of times when you start having problems, the vendor says, well, that's not our problem. That's the other vendor's problem. That vendor says, well, it's not our problem, it's their problem. So, you go in circles when you talk to vendors when you start having issues. The idea is, and we'll stress this later, is to get rid of that, to have similar equipment, replace some of the very old and outdated, underperforming equipment. We have no network monitoring on the network. I have no idea what's going on in the network right now. We don't know if we've got somebody that's downloading videos, watching YouTube, you know, copying files, you know, from the network that they shouldn't be copying. We have no visibility of what's going on in the network. The only time we know something's wrong is if somebody calls and says, is the internet down? Are we having problems? Is it slow? So, we need the ability to monitor, know what's going on in the network from a master console so that I know if I've got a problem in Navisota or Iowa, I don't have to wait for somebody to call and I've gotta drive out there and look at it. It's very inefficient, very cost prohibitive for us to do that. When I stepped in this position, there's zero documentation, zero on everything, on software, on hardware, on systems, on logical diagrams, physical diagrams, passwords. There's no documentation on any of that. Since I've come on board, I've accumulated about three hundred to three hundred and fifty pages of documentation thus far that I'll have in a manual. So, in case, God forbid, I ever get hit by a bus, the next person will have all the documentation of how everything's connected, what the passwords are, so they can manage the network if I'm unavailable. My estimate is that's probably gonna be closer to six hundred pages when we're done. Right now, we're about three hundred pages. Virus and malware infections are pretty prevalent across the organization. And a lot of the computers don't even know, the user doesn't even know they're infected. And since we've got right now, found out in Iowa, we've got a server that's infected. It's infected all the computers in the office. The only reason I knew they had it infected, they called the phone company and said, there's something wrong with our internet. It's real slow. Well, come to find out, their office is infected with viruses. I've spent the last day to day and a half. I've gotta go out there again today. Some of these viruses are easy to remove. Some of them are very difficult and very aggressive, and that's what I'm finding in Iowa. But I can tell you, five out of the six computers I've touched as I've gone across the offices are infected with some type of malware or virus. Some of them are sending information out, so they're not doing destructive things in the sense that they're not causing your computer not to work, but they're sending information out to foreign countries. So, that's a huge priority on my radar, the security aspect and the risk that we're exposing ourselves to because of that.
Is it the Russians?
Don't know yet. It's all over the board.
Could you draft a memo?
I got a dossier for that. Risk assessment, the top five things that I see from a risk assessment standpoint, obviously, the virus infections, that's huge because information could be leaving our servers, our computers. It could be, you know, it could be HR information, it could be county financial information. We just don't know. There's been a hundred plus infections. I had fifty-six infections just on one computer. And this is, I haven't touched every computer. I've only touched about ten percent of the computers. What I'm finding a pattern that it's pretty prevalent across the organization. Network penetrations from the outside. We have no perimeter firewall today. When the internet connection comes into the sheriff's office, it's dispersed out to the individual offices. And the individual offices are, in the past, depended upon the local machine to stop that virus, which you can tell by the infections, that process is not working well. I've always said, you need to stop every, ninety percent of what you can stop at the gateway. And I've been working with Todd Green at the sheriff's office. There was some equipment that he purchased as one of his projects that's gonna allow us to save about four thousand dollars because that project included a perimeter firewall, so I won't have to expend that money. Todd's gonna work with me to get that perimeter firewall to cut down, hopefully, ninety percent of the bad traffic and viruses and malware and those kind of things coming into the organization. So, we have about a four thousand dollar savings there just on that one piece of hardware.
Can I ask you a question? Does that cover the Navisota locations?
My plan is to integrate the offices so that they are covered under a single perimeter firewall. It better protects your office. It allows us to better manage your office. It's in my long-term strategy. Well, it'd probably be up more in the short-term strategy. We've just gotta get what's called a tunnel between your office and in their office. Data loss due to inadequate backups. We are moving away from the previous provider's cloud storage solution. We're paying about twenty to twenty-four thousand a year, depending on how much data we were backing up. That's gonna be cut down to about two thousand, so about a twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollar savings just by switching. And I'm in the process of doing that now. We've got several machines in backup. I estimate probably two more weeks and we'll be completely over on that new system. And that, and the cost savings will begin to kick in at that point. Plus, we've also noticed on the previous backup solution, it wasn't being monitored. And we had a situation where we had a departmental server, very important departmental server, that hadn't been backed up in three months and nobody knew it. As you had mentioned, we need to have eyes on situation, make sure things are going right. And I think the Commissioners and the judge made a good choice to fill a full-time position in this role so that backups and things like that can be monitored on a regular basis so you don't have a catastrophic failure. If we'd have lost that server, we'd have lost months worth of hill country work. It would've been catastrophic. There would've been lots to lose there. There's increased cost to maintain operations and systems, but with the new systems, there's less cost being budgeted yearly for this maintenance. So, the things that we're putting in place and maintaining operations actually allows us to reduce costs because some of the things we're putting in place. It's not on a break fix operations anymore. We could be proactive and get, you know, purchasing discounts. We could put hardware in place that monitors and notifies us before we have a catastrophic failure so that the costs are actually available at the time. Some of my recommended actions, some of these we've already begun to implement. For instance, the private cloud for the county will say this, it says eighteen. It's actually more like twenty thousand dollars a year. That's the backup solution that we're implementing right now over the previous provider that we had. Combined networks will have better collaboration, better communication between the networks, better protection, as you mentioned, with Navisota office, with Iowa office. Policies and procedures, there are, when I came on board, there's no policies and procedures for the acting department of what the fair incorrect usage of email, computer systems, applications, you know. Can I get on Facebook? Can I get on YouTube? You know, what am I allowed to do? What am I not allowed to do? What am I expected as an employee using the county's resources? What am I held accountable to? Employees need to know that so that they know they're not overstepping the bounds of the county and Commissioners. And as a side note on that, on email usage, I've been talking to the state about what are, what the state regulations are as far as retaining email, what you can delete and what you can't delete. I'm drafting a policy that I'll have for y'all to review shortly. There are governmental and state guidelines as to what you can delete and what you can't. Basically, it's if you, if that email contains anything related to government business, it needs to operate on a government email and it does not need to be deleted. So, there's a high level. That's basically what it is. If you conduct government, if you're conducting communication for government business, it has to be on a government email address and it has to be maintained and not deleted. And what I'm trying to find out is how long, I think what they're telling me is two years is the typical standard of keeping emails. There are certain departments that have to keep emails much longer, but I'll have all that outlined once I've finished my communication with the state and what the regulations are. As I mentioned, we don't have a perimeter intrusion detection, intrusion prevention system or firewall. I'm gonna be working with Todd. We have a meeting this week with the provider. We're gonna be outlining how soon we can get that installed. I'm standardizing on hardware and software across the organization so that everybody's on basically the same type of computer system. Makes it much easier for me to work on. It makes it much easier to swap out equipment. If you've got a laptop that goes down, I can swap it out with you and you're used to the look and the feel. It operates the same. Same way with hardware, software. We've got people running Office twenty-seven, two thousand seven, twenty-ten, twenty-thirteen, twenty-sixteen. That all needs to be standardized. I think we can actually reduce our overall software costs with Microsoft by doing that because right now, we're bringing off-the-shelf packaged copies of Office, which is about four hundred dollars a copy. That would be reduced to about one fifty a copy. So, we can, we have reduced savings there. Plus, we put everybody on the same platform.
Also, by you doing this one, not suggesting that anybody or any department has pirated any software, but this will help keep us safer in that area, wouldn't it?
Yes. It makes managing our license much, much easier. Right now, everything's a box copy. I'm finding copies of software, like ten copies of Office, that I have no idea who they belong to, who they were installed on. I only know that I can't use them when I try to install them on another PC and it says it's already been activated. They don't tell you with who, what. So, license management gets to be a very costly, time-consuming aspect.
License management, where I was looking for.
Of my position. A system envisioning solution I'm putting in place, since I've been here in the month I've been here, I've had three machines that have failed. It takes about four to six hours if you get your full time dedicated to rebuilding that machine, reinstalling the operating system, reinstalling applications, connecting printers, installing favorites, all those things you've gotta do to get it back to where they're used to, what they're seeing and being comfortable. I've got a solution that I'm gonna be implementing in the next month or so that will allow me to have images of computers. So, if your laptop dies, I can literally plug a thumb drive into that laptop, rebuild it in under two minutes. So, go from six hours to two minutes, a very cost-effective way of managing rebuilds of the computers. The return on investment on that software is about fourteen months based on you having ten machines fail in a year's period. So, it'll pay for itself very quickly. I'm looking to implement a new help desk system, one that people will actually use. I've learned that people say, yeah, we got a help desk system, but I turn in tickets and we never hear anything back. The idea is to have a help desk system that I monitor, manage, and that the users get accustomed to using. So, when you send in tickets, I can prioritize them. You can let me know if this is critical or it can wait a couple of weeks. It helps me better schedule my day. We're planning to do an audit of the circuits. This was a process that was started by Michelle Sanders and who else? Probably just Michelle. We're looking at bills where we were still paying for circuits that they felt were already terminated because people had moved, technology had changed.
Who's they? Is that they, the county?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm working with Mary in the auditor's office with Michelle. They were looking to try to identify, do we still have this circuit? I know we used to have it because so-and-so was in this building, but now they moved and maybe circuits didn't get connected. There's a potential thought that there's about twenty-four thousand dollars annual savings by auditing that report, disconnecting circuits that we know we don't know, and renegotiating contracts on existing circuits that could have savings on. Because in my previous position, we had a circuit that nobody had their eyes on. We were paying four thousand dollars a month, but they signed the contract twelve years ago when circuits were real expensive, but it was on our auto-renew thing, policy. And so, four thousand dollars a month. We renegotiated that contract when I came on board. It went from four thousand to three hundred dollars a month. And it's just, nobody was looking at it. Telephone companies are not gonna tell you when it gets four thousand a month. They're not gonna tell you. We can save you money, so. I think we'll find substantial savings as we roll out the new infrastructure, roll out the new software. Like I said, these are just the top five. There are other cost savings that we're beginning to undertake. So, the benefits of everything, of taking an assessment of the infrastructure, looking on risk, trying to mitigate that risk, there's gonna be benefits. And part of that is reduced costs, consolidation of resources. Right now, we've got five separate offices that each have their own server. Well, that server's gotta be replaced probably every three to five years at, you know, eight thousand dollars server cost. So, now you've got five servers. You're gonna pay forty thousand dollars every five years. Or if you put it under one server, which I'm proposing, everybody can share a common server. We have better availability, higher availability, better backups, faster speeds, and we don't have that extra cost of having all these servers spread around. They're doing minimal cost where one large server could take care of those needs. Just by the wisdom of the Commissioners, looking at, knowing this county's growing and it's, the IT department's kind of been managed by proxy over seventeen years, hiring whatever consultant was available at the time to come out and fix a problem that just, they just come out just to fix the problem. Adding up the cost of what that was costing us annually versus bringing a person into this position just in employee benefits and salary saves about eleven thousand dollars a year just by having this position versus if this position was outsourced. So, I think it was wise of the Commissioners to establish an IT position. It helps the county save money and you'll have better control of your environment. One of the things that I like to do is renegotiate with vendors, so I'll be renegotiating vendor contracts, putting pressure on them. We've already negotiated contracts with Dell. My plan is to have Dell products throughout the company. As IBM products fail, we'll replace them with Dell. We're looking at average savings of about three hundred and fifty per machine right now. Plus, we'll have a three-year onsite warranty, which was not included on the IBM products. So, we've got better service, lower cost. We've got about a hundred machines. So, over a five-year period, saving, you know, three to four hundred dollars per machine for a hundred machines are substantial savings within five years.
So, where are the IBM products?
Well, they're Lenovo, the ThinkPad, the ThinkSears, yeah. It's an IBM subsidiary company, yeah, owned by IBM. Yeah, Lenovo products, sorry. Thank you. Loss license prevention, as the judge mentioned. I'm having to buy licenses right now because I have no idea. On two machines I rebuilt, we can't find the license. We don't know where the license is, who it was licensed to. So, I'm having to spend six hundred dollars and just have two machines because of that. Volume purchases, I'll be working with the Treasurer's Office with the different departments to try to get volume purchased, have inventory in stock. I had bought a couple of machines the other day. In the past, I noticed when we had a machine go down, we'd have to tell that user, okay, I've got an order machine. It'll be here in three days. Then, I'll get it built. That'll take the fourth day. You'll get it on the fifth day. So, they're without a machine for five days unless we have a spare. We had no spares, so I ordered spares. We had a machine in Janice's office the other day. It went down. I had a machine back in her office the next day, operational. So, we saved, you know, four days there. Those are the kind of... Those are the kind of things that we wanna do, is have inventory, buy in bulk to reduce costs.
Are we gonna stagger some of these purchases? I mean, like, say, for instance, my computer I just got last year.
Yeah. We'll do it on an as failure basis. If your machine's running fine and you're happy with it and it's doing what you need, there's no need to replace it. It's a, I don't, I don't wanna come in and just spend a bunch of money to yank out one over and put in Dell. It'll be on an as failure basis. So if the machine can't be repaired or can't, you know, be resuscitated, we'll replace it with a new machine. You should see increased performance. I've been talking to one of the vendors that works with the sheriff's office. There's rumors that there's gonna be another internet connection that's gonna be, that could be tied to a grant for the sheriff's office. It would give us, right now we have a four hundred meg circuit, it would take us to a gig circuit, almost two and a half times the speed we have now. And it could potentially come in at zero cost, cause it's part of, I don't know the whole details on it, but it could come in at zero cost, where right now we're paying about, I believe, four thousand a month for our internet connection.
Is that gonna help our situation in Navasota where we're with Sutton Link?
No, we'll have to, I'll renegotiate with Sutton Link and see what we can do there. That was a, that was not a wise choice when it was Sutton Link there.
We'll talk about that.
But, yeah, I'm aware of the situation I'm working in.
When, when the BB card loop comes in, will that be hooked up too?
It's one of the options we're looking at, I don't know the whole details of it, other than I know what they're trying to do. But it sounds like it'll be very high speed fiber and a very reduced cost to the counties.
And it should be in Navasota shortly, I think, I've, I've been off of the card.
It was already, it's, it's, it's there, there.
Brian coming south to Navasota at the January meeting.
Yeah, cause if we could get you connected on that, that'd be great.
Yeah. It's gonna be much faster than what we're operating on. Greg, you wanna get us to the, to the cost there and accomplishments?
And like I said, these are estimated costs. Some of these we've been able to reduce the, the cost on as I'm purchasing some of the software. Replacing obviously inferior equipment. We've got switches, network gear, all across the organization. It has to be replaced. It's, it's a security risk, it's a performance inhibitor, it's a management nightmare. So we're looking probably around thirty thousand to replace, replace that equipment. Network and maintenance and monitoring, I was actually able to get that about three thousand less than what it's listed here. We've already purchased that and we'll begin implementing it to monitor the networks and provide maintenance on networks. System managing tool, I was able to reduce that by another three hundred dollars. Email and office system, this will be a big one, and I know this plays into the DA's office. They wanting to build shared calendars, they can't today because of the email system we're using. If we can get us all on the same email system, we can have shared calendars, we can have better collaboration cause everybody's on the same version of the software. There's a lot more features in, in that functionality, in that software than, than what we have currently today. So that'll be a, a, a key piece to what I'd like to do in the organization is that's the email and office system, where everybody's on twenty sixteen, everybody's on hosted exchange. All the problems that I haven't addressed today will be solved, related to email will be solved by that. We'll have much less spam email than we have today. I see a tremendous amount of spam email that comes in on users' computers. That will be dramatically reduced as well. Server hardware, this, I've been working with Dell, pushing them very hard. The original MSRP on this server was about thirty-three thousand. We asked for government discounts, brought it down to about twenty-three thousand, then I pushed for additional discounts and got it down to about sixteen thousand. So I, I don't ever pay full price for anything.
We like that.
Yeah, so I, I, I beat them up and they're using pretty good, cause they, you know, they want, they want a government county's business, so they're pretty good about working with you to get their foot in the door. And they're pretty good about, that's not just a one time discount, it's, it's continual across anything that I buy. Like I said, I'm, I'm able to reduce the purchase of laptops and desktops substantially right now. Laptops about three hundred dollars, desktops about two, two fifty over what we're paying for it in Lenovo. Plus, we have onsite warranty.
Great.
The new backup solution, we've already purchased that, like I said, we were paying about twenty to twenty-four depending on our backup. Now we're only paying two thousand, so we saved about twenty thousand a year by going to a new backup solution.
And the bottom line, all items above are in the current twenty eighteen budget that we have.
And I expressed to the judge, I'll express to the commissioners, my, my job is being a former business owner for over fifteen years and my own business, I really watch my dollars. I never pay full price for anything. Sometimes, you know, to get by, you have to use duct tape, metal wire to fix things, but that's not the longest term solution. But you, you do that to get by for the interim, so you can get good pricing and get a, get a solution in place. So I'm very cost conscious when it comes to making decisions for the county. So I, I want you to know you can put your faith in me, that I will, I will find the right solution at the right price. Cause cheapest is not always best and, and most expensive is not always best. Some of the accomplishments, like I said, the, the backup solution, we've, we save between eighteen, twenty thousand a year. We re-instituted the backup on servers that weren't getting backed up, so we prevent, we prevent catastrophic failures. The one server I was talking about was at the district clerk's office. Toner cartridge purchasing program, we, we think we can save about two hundred and fifty-five percent or about twenty-five hundred dollars a year just on toner alone.
And that goes in with getting same or similar equipment in the different offices, right?
Yeah, my goal is, we have over, I think, thirty-three different printer types in the county. And so the idea is to get a set, maybe six, a high capacity black line, high passing color, low capacity black line, low capacity color, made a few others. Now, obviously, there's, there's departments like the voters that have to have specialized printer that can print heavy cardstock. There will always be exceptions for those, but as a general rule, we'll standardize our equipment and that'll help reduce our costs, cause then we can buy toners in bulk. We're not having to buy a toner in bulk for thirty-three printers, we can buy it for six and, and we can reduce our, our costs.
Good.
Also, on the, on the toner stuff, if all the departments, since we're now buying the coffee machines, if we kinda standardize those as much as we can, the toner is provided with those and that could cut down a lot of expense. This, all this other toner purchasing is for printers sitting at your desk.
I, I, I feel it's important that we have defined policies for the organization as to how people use their computer equipment or devices, allowing phones to connect to the network, et cetera. We just need to have those defined. And I come from a background where I used to have, I had several security engineers that worked directly for me and I used to get arguments a long time because they, they wouldn't allow anything on the network. You couldn't, you couldn't do anything. And, and I would get upset when I couldn't check my Facebook, so. But the idea is not to make it so restrictive that, that the employees were bailed to their managers and were bailed to the commission and the court is, but to allow a balance, work life balance. If you need to check your bank account, if you need to, you know, even if you need to get on Facebook, we, we can set parameters that say we allowed it certain times or a certain amount. And, but these will all be decisions that we work with the departments on, work with the commissioners court to say, okay, let's set some kind of guidelines of what we need that to be. Cause if we let everybody use YouTube all day long, then nothing ever gets done.
That's right.
And, and like I said, we talked about defining printer, computer network standards, email address standards. We, we have people using private email addresses. We have some email addresses are first name, last name, some are first name, last initial, first initial, last name. But we, it needs to be consistent. Now, you can have multiple email addresses, like I can have G Cannon or Greg dot Cannon or, or Cannon G, but they all come to a common email address, which may be Greg dot Cannon. So that when, it, it, it looks more professional across the county when we, when we standardize on these things. It, it, it gives an appearance of professionalism when we deal with other organizations. An email distribution list, that's another big one, so that if you need to email all employees, we'll be defining email distribution list for that, or if you just email the commissioners court, you, you don't have to remember everybody's digital name. So in conclusion, we hope to, we, we are reducing costs, we plan to continue to reduce costs. We wanna combine the networks, increase security to prevent hackers from the outside, viruses, malware, et cetera. We wanna update the equipment, so we're brought into the twenty-first century and we're considered more professional environment, not a home network type environment. That'll increase reliability, availability, performance overall across the network, for internet, for application speeds, for, for access files. And my, my overall goal is to use everything that I'm doing today to carry to the new building as much as possible so we don't have a duplication of cost. So everything that we're using today should be transferable to the new building.
Any questions for Greg? Greg, thank you for the update, and I just wanted to share with commissioners the decision that you folks struggled over last year and made the decision to bring an IT person on and then hiring Greg. I just wanted to compliment you on that decision, cause he's, unless your computer broke down, you might not know or be aware of all of the things that he's been doing for the county in the way that he's been doing.
And we appreciate that work.
A one day down's better than five days, alright.
Judge, can I make one point before you move on? As you get ready to prepare the budget, you're gonna need to think through what his budget's going to look like as far as acquisition or whether it's gonna be in each individual office for the purchase of IT equipment. It'll extend the copiers, it'll extend the computers, it will be significant for you to consider in your budgeting process, or the judge to consider the budgeting process, what, what things are going to be contained in his budget, what things are gonna be contained in the elected official's budget. This was created, and this is, you're dealing with the purchasing manual today. Same concept of, and I'm not advocating for this, but the same concept of having a purchasing agent who uses the buying power and the leverage of the county to acquire the, the items that the various elected officials need. We, like other small counties, continue to allow the elected official to have a budget to acquire pencils or paper or whatever it may be. But if you can imagine that we got all our paper in one office through one purchasing agent, you could get it at a reduced price. And folks would come from their offices in the county to the purchasing agent and get paper. And it would be all acquired by the purchasing agent. Then the question remains, whose budget would contain those dollars to do the acquisition? You're going to face that when we're talking about the acquisition of IT equipment. How much is allotted into the IT director's budget, how much is into the elected official? So I just wanna point that out, it's gonna be a significant change in the way that the budget is done. In my opinion, I'm not taking credit for this position, but in my opinion, it's the way that it needed to be done, it's the way that needs to be done. Counties will continue to struggle from the lack of organizational structure and that each office can do what they want to, to the degree that you can manage that and that you can put folks in charge of certain items, certain processes, certain acquisitions. I think you're gonna improve the efficiency and the delivery of services to the county, and I think you'll do it for reduced costs.
In the twenty eighteen budget, what was asked for in each departmental budget for machinery and equipment that had to do with technology, that was moved over to the IT department, even, even for printers and stuff.
So as you get an idea of how much is being expended over there, which should be less than the total of what was being expended otherwise, you, obviously, it's part of the budget process and hopefully that number will go down significantly.
Understood, thank you. Moving on our agenda to county judge, item number eleven, consider and take action to renew the lease for three one eight North La Salle, Navasota, Texas, which is the current location for the adult probation department and authorize the county judge's signatory attachment eleven.
Judge, could I say something on that? This is the location that was owned by my father and my stepmother, stepmother and my father passed away. It's owned, the probate is still in process, but effectively the property is owned by my stepmother. I don't necessarily wanna be engaged in any renegotiation of that contract. Previously, the DA was, for fear of conflict. If you got to a point where you wanted to do some negotiating, I would say let's bring the DA's office in for that purpose. My understanding is Mr. Cox contacted, I think, your office to talk about whether this was going to be renewed when it was up in, or when it is up in June. So there's no urgency at this point to change where we are. But I'm aware of how it got drafted and my father's role in drafting it and the fact that Mr. McLean reviewed it and asked for some changes. Of course, Mr. McLean's now not with the DA's office, but I just wanna be sure that I don't mind talking to the facts of it, but when it comes to the legalities of it, I would prefer that you deal with the DA's office so there's no concern that I'm trying to look out for my family over the county.
And I, and I did see where we have the letter where it puts Kathy Foltz as the landlord versus, versus your father.
We did an amendment, there was an issue with the, with the check going to my father, which would have been held up in the estate versus going to my stepmother, she was always an owner of the property, so there's never an issue. I would point out one thing that Mr. Cox and I discovered in the last few days. There is a reference on, I think it's page one to an exhibit A, it's in the property description. It says, as shown in exhibit A, we didn't find exhibit A attached to the agreement that we, each of us was looking at. I think it was intended to be, because of the description of the offices to be used. That entire block is owned by my father and stepmother, and so there are many places in the back of that office, including one general bay that has a big roll up door with four little side bays and then a Quonson hut behind that that are not being leased by the county. And so I think Commissioner Husfield did a sketch of the offices that were being revamped, let's say, or some were being improved and some were not necessarily, I think it was painting or something. But I think there was a sketch that may have been intended to be exhibit A that just didn't get attached. So I'd raise that issue, if this gets renewed, we need to consider that exhibit A. Okay, well, the document that's attached here doesn't have that sketch.
Mr. Cox, you wanna, you wanna speak to this at all?
No, sir, I mean, it's just up for consideration. The lease expires in June, I just wanted to bring it to the court's attention early enough to take any action if it is in fact what you're gonna do later on, discuss anything that you might wanna discuss with the landlord. So that it, it is on the radar and it is coming up.
Are, are there, is, is this the best option in your opinion for that, for the adult probation?
As far as the leased facility?
Well, I mean, if, if we don't renew the lease, then you're out on the streets, so. But I mean, versus doing that, are, are there options, any other options? Or does this seem to be adequate serving the need of your department?
Absolutely, yes. Landlord, Mr. Foltz and Ms. Foltz have been extremely responsive to any issues that we've had. We really hadn't had any issues that hadn't been resolved, so at this point, it's a good option for us.
Very good, thank you.
And Judge, I'd point out, the term is a twenty-four month term with optional twelve month renewal periods.
Is that automatic?
Two of them. I, I did not negotiate this, I'll say that again. Take it up with your counsel. But no, it's not, and the question is, for you all, do you wanna stick with that? And do you wanna take one of those op, uh, twelve month periods when this comes up? Do you wanna do a two year, do you wanna renegotiate any of the terms? And again, I, I don't wanna be involved in that for fear that somebody might suggest that I'm not pursuing the county's interest.
Thank you for your consideration.
I would suggest that we do it on a, on a twelve month basis because it's my understanding that when the building is completed, that we are gonna possibly be moving adult probation into this building and therefore saving that money each month.
John, one question, and this is the original lease we had with you, right?
Correct, this is not the amendment, we did an amendment.
The only thing I noticed was that the term was twenty-four months with two optional twelve year leases, but on next to the last page, Roman numeral two, says lease term of three years with two year extension. And I didn't catch that the first time.
What page is that?
It's the next to the last page, Roman numeral two.
Starts with remodel requirements at the top.
Under remodel requirements is item one, then number two is.
Then number two is lease term of three years with two-year extensions. That kind of contradicts our terms on the front page.
Yeah, I think the intention was the two-year. I don't, do you recall who did that?
No.
Addendum? Again, you should take that up with your counsel. I think he did.
For sure.
Good as bad.
He can say this part of working on this particular project, the one thing that Mr. Foltz has said is that if we renewed for that last year, that he would renegotiate the price because the price was figured in with all of our remodel requirements. And I think that might have been where that came from.
Yeah, I think that's, I do think that's right.
Now that you mention it, I think that's right.
That's correct.
So, we did do some remodel at the, we did a remodel at the owner's expense. So, therefore, are we now under the lease term of three years instead of two?
Well, I would say to you that it could be an argument from one side, take one position, other side, take the other position. If you intend to do another year, it's kind of a non-issue, right?
Well, do we need to take action to renew the lease at this point? I mean, or do we want to delay this until?
We don't have to. We have until June, but there's no sense waiting till the last minute.
Right. I think the issue was Mr. Cox was the guy awake at the wheel?
Yeah.
And he woke up really early? Exactly, it's a good thing. And so, he brought it to the attention of the court with the lack of continuity in the judge's position to say, this is coming up and I'd like to be sure that we don't miss our date.
So, now, to be clear on what you're saying, the original upfront page, basic information says it terminates two thousand and eighteen. Whereas in the back, you're saying it terminates.
Well, if we renew today, that's really a non-issue.
Yeah.
Well, we have till June to renew, so.
I'd say, why put it, you know, on another agenda? We've done discussed it. We have to discuss it again in May.
Well, don't you want to maybe renegotiate the lease part since they're not paying for any more remodel at this point?
If I could say something, I do believe, I recall reading a paragraph in there that there is a requirement that the county notify the landlord if it is their intention to renew the lease. And I can't remember what the title thing was, but it's beyond the thirty-day mark. That would be required for notification if they're going to cancel it.
That's the term paragraph on page one.
I suggest we should go ahead and renew it today.
Your auditor was saying that maybe the price is negotiable. Is that what you're saying, monthly rent?
Yeah, because what Mr. Husfeld had said was that the landlord did pay for part of the remodel. The county paid for part, but the landlord paid for part. And that from what I understood him to say just now is that maybe we needed to renegotiate the lease amount since there's no more remodeling going on and we paid that amount for two years.
Well, I believe the lease amount was negotiated without a remodel. Then if we did some remodeling, then we were to extend this contract from two years to three years. Since we did do the remodeling, then we're obligated to really contract this for another year.
Okay.
So.
Well, and at four thousand square feet for twenty-four hundred dollars is very good rate.
And if we renegotiate it, I don't think it's going to go down. It'll probably go up. So, I think it's be the best interest of the county to renew this right now, put it to bed.
So, Commissioner, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to renew the lease of three-eighteen North LaSalle, Navasota, Texas, which is the current location of the adult probation department and authorize the county judge's signatory.
This will be a twelve-month lease?
For a twelve-month lease.
I'm sorry. I'll second.
There's a motion, Commissioner Husfeld. There's a second by Commissioner Mallett to renew the lease for a twelve-month period in regards to item number eleven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Who, Commissioner Husfeld and Commissioner Mallett seconded. Who makes the landlord aware of the renewal?
I will be happy to make her aware.
Thank you, sir.
And probably need to do something in writing to indicate that the renewal has been done. If it's just to show that the renewal has been exercised, I suspect I can do that. There's not.
Would your office be agreeable to put that language together?
You bet.
Thank you. Item number twelve, consider and take action to approve new language in the personnel policies manual regarding notifying employees of county closure due to inclement weather or emergency. See attachment twelve point three. And this was based on our ICE age shutdown a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to have clarity in how we notify our employees and make sure that everybody knows and aware. So, now, on the emergency closing B out of the employee manual, page thirteen, item number three, it says, once a decision has been made to close any government facility, the county judge or county commissioner making the decision or his or her staff shall make every attempt to notify local media to inform citizens of such closure and shall have the county website updated to reflect such closure. Affected county department heads will also be notified of the closure. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the change to the language in regards to the personnel policy manual that was just read, and that's on page thirteen. Okay, the county judge has made a motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor of item twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item number thirteen, discuss and take action on the content of commissioner's court regular meeting agendas versus commissioner court special meeting agendas. I threw this on to be discussed, and it's a quick discussion, I think. But since we've had the AG's opinion that we need to have weekly meetings to approve payrolls and bills and that sort of thing, my request to the commissioners is that we limit the odd weeks, which would be the first, third, and fifth weeks as they fall in the month. Limit those agendas to consent agenda items or extreme emergency items and then conduct our regular meetings, which are the even weeks, which would be the second and the fourth weeks of the month, and make those kind of the full-blown agendas. And the reason for doing that, I mean, we're already together, and I get that. We're already together now for two hours on a special meeting. And we have another agenda right behind this. But I'd like us to be able to know, we're going to come in, we're going to approve payroll, we're going to pre-approve bills, and then y'all are able to go do what you need to do along with the citizens and everybody else and then have the understanding on the second and the fourth weeks, and maybe you want to bring your lunch.
Well, originally, that's what we talked about anyway, you know. It just kept growing and growing. But I think.
And I'll take responsibility for part of that growth.
Okay. And I think our citizens were expecting that at the regular meetings, this is where they're going to hear the bulk of
Yes.
the big discussions that we need to have.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I would suggest that we do go back to what we originally intended this.
Yeah, I agree, sensitive issue, you know, issues for the county addressed to that.
You know, if, because burn ban is a regular agenda item on the second and the fourth. But if we had a dry period, and we could certainly talk about that in the special. But, you know, I don't want to do an IT update on our special meeting. And maybe we don't want to talk about Mesa on a special meeting.
Yes.
So, we're kind of patterned to what we're going to be addressing.
Okay. On the special meetings, could we still have items that are on the consent agenda, like the budget amendments and the line item?
Sure. And I'm thinking, yes, Mary, those things that kind of go fairly automatic. A couple of questions, a couple of comments, we make a motion, we vote, and we're done.
Judge, I think one of the things that you'll face is, is the reason that we got here, I think, is everybody believes their item is an emergency. So, you're going to have to.
I can use some discretion on that, Captain.
You're going to have to decide as a court, who has the discretion to decide what's an emergency? Either two commissioners.
Right.
Or the judge.
Right.
Or however you want to do it. But that's what we've talked about before, about how you get an item on the agenda, either two commissioners or the judge. Just be aware, that's what's going, that's why this got out of control is you have a lot of people who say, I gotta, gotta get this done this week because somebody's waiting, whoever it is, a developer, whatever. You're going to have to decide whether that's an emergency or not.
Right.
So, I would say, you don't necessarily need, part of your motion today, just be aware that you're going to have to exercise that discretion or you, as a court, are going to have to decide how that exercise, how that discretion is utilized.
Okay. Thank you.
What about items, to make the trip worthwhile and come up here to Anderson just for ten minutes, you know, it's not really, and we need to be productive if we're going to have a meeting. What about just having the items on the special meetings that just affect county employees? Like the MASA issue. That doesn't affect county individuals or citizens. It just affects the county employees. So, that could be discussed in the special meeting.
Good point.
Anything that, because I'm sure the people that come to the meeting don't want to sit and listen to all this. It doesn't affect them. It just affects the county itself and their employees. So, let's get that out of the way on the special meetings. And anything that has to do with county business or affects the citizens of the county, then we have that on the regular, on the regular menu. But everything else, we just put in special meetings.
We could use that as part of the screening process.
Sure.
Because if I was a citizen sitting out here for two or three hours, listening to half the stuff that we talk about is unnecessary. So, we don't want to waste their time either.
Very good point. So, do you want to make a motion?
Oh, okay.
Well, and here's the deal is that may be pretty convoluted as far as the motion goes.
Okay.
You could leave today with an understanding of that's what you're going to do. You won't have minutes, though, that reflect this as a policy decision. And so, you won't have something to go back to other than watching this video or asking one another what you remember. Please don't ask me what I remember. So, you can put it in black and white or try to reduce what his thought to black and white. But I think more than anything, he's giving you instructions about what he expects to see on the agenda. So, if you wanted to get by without minutes reflecting, you could. Otherwise, I think Gary needs to figure out the language that will encapsulate what he said.
I'm going to let the judge figure that out.
And I'm going to take your comments under advisement, and we'll use that as we move forward putting agendas together. With that, we'll move to agenda item number fourteen.
I made the motion, we adjourn.
Wait a minute, or he made the motion. Are you going to do a second and a?
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, he didn't make the motion, okay.
He started to.
Yeah, he started.
So, we're back at thirteen?
Work, well, there's.
There was no second.
There was no second. We're, we're moving, no action. I'll just take the comments under advisement.
Okay.
Agenda item fourteen.
I made the motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
Well, wait till she makes a motion.
Commissioner Walker's made the motion, we adjourn.
And seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky, this meeting is adjourned.